Welcome everyone to the October eighteenth Regular Planning Commission Meeting. I am Tamara Blake Wallace, I'm the Planning Commission Administrator. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting, allowing for both virtual and in-person participation. Serving as moderator for tonight is Christine Goldsmith, who will now go over the rules and etiquette for tonight's meeting. Chris?
Thank you Tamara. My name's Chris Goldsmith and I'll be Zoom moderator this evening. This meeting is being recorded on video and audio for record-keeping purposes. For those attending virtually via Zoom, please keep yourself muted to ensure no interruptions to the evening. If you're asked to speak and you are attending with audio only by telephone, you can mute and unmute using the phone's mute button or by pressing star six on your touchpad. If you are attending virtually with a computer or smart device, you can mute and unmute using the microphone mute button on the Zoom toolbar or by using keyboard shortcuts, press Alt A on a Windows device or Command Shift A on a Mac. When the floor is open for public comments or questions, those attending in person will be asked to speak and then those attending virtually. If speaking, please identify yourself for the record first and then speak. If attending by telephone and you wish to ask a question or make comment, please press star nine on the touchpad to raise your hand and you will be called upon in turn at the appropriate time. If you're attending virtually and wish to ask a question or make a comment, raise your Zoom hand and you will be called upon. Please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you. And finally, please use the Zoom chat to indicate if there appears to be technical difficulties or you cannot hear the meeting audio and we will work expeditiously to try to correct any issues. Please refrain from placing comments or questions in the Zoom chat as not all in attendance at the public meeting can see those communications.
Thank you, Chris. I will now turn the floor over to the Planning Commission Chairman to call the meeting to order.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Calver County Planning Commission's October eighteenth, 2023 Regular Meeting. My name is Maria Bueller and we will begin with item one on the proposed agenda, roll call. Vice Chair Kernan?
Here.
Commissioner Gadway?
Present.
Commissioner Freeland?
Here.
Commissioner Tuie?
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Haller?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
We have a quorum. If you could all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is item three, actions on tonight's agenda.
Commissioners, any changes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kernan, seconded by Commissioner Tuie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item four, actions on proposed summary of actions. Item A, September twentieth, 2023, regular meeting.
Commissioners, any changes?
There's been no changes, motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kernan, seconded by Commissioner Gadway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is recognitions of persons attending the meeting. Tonight we have from Planning and Zoning Judy Mickle, Deputy Director of Zoning. We have Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director of Planning. We have Tay Harris, Long Range Planner. Rachel O'Shea, Zoning Planner. Jessica Gattano, Planner Three. Amalia Peetam, Planner Three. Olivia Vedado, Planner Three. Kat Lockwood, Planner Two. Kelsey Chavez, Planner One. And attending virtually tonight, we have Lisa Shepherd, Admin Aid. And then we have present with us Becky Parkinson, our Planning Commission Clerk. And serving as our legal counsel tonight is John Mattingly. And from public safety, we have Stanley Harris, Communications Chief. We'll now start the meeting with item six, major subdivisions for final review and action. On the agenda tonight, we have item A, SDFP one four two nine seven seven Wyatt's Ridge. It's lots one through twenty-four, open space and rights of way. Wyatt's Ridge, which is, I'm sorry Wyatt's Way, which is public, and Olivia Court, which is private. Background and discussion. I, Tamara Blake Wallace, Secretary of the Planning Commission, certified that all conditions of the preliminary approval granted by the Planning Commission on August twenty-fourth for SDFP one four nine seven, one four two nine seven seven Wyatt's Ridge, lots one through twenty-four, open space and rights of ways Wyatt's Ridge, public, and Olivia Court, private have been met. Recommendations and next steps, the Planning Commission's options for a course of action are to approve as certified, recommend changes and approve accordingly, or request additional information from staff and defer to a future Planning Commission meeting, or four, disapprove. The Board's pleasure.
Lieutenant Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve is certified.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Freeland, seconded by Commissioner Tuie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next we have item seven, applications for site plan review and action. There are no items on the agenda tonight. Item eight, major subdivision applications for preliminary review and action. There are no items on the agenda tonight. Which brings us to item nine, long-range planning. Item A, Solomon's Architectural Review Committee, SARC twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, Solomon's Yachting Center and Proposed Boat Shop.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jessica Gattano, Planner Three. Is this thing on? Good. With the Department of Planning and Zoning. And this evening, I'm here to go over the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee's recommendation on case number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three for the Solomon's Yachting Center Proposed Boat Shop. The Solomon's Yachting Center Proposed Boat Shop is located at two fifty-five Alexander Lane in Solomon's, Maryland. It's located in the Solomon's Town Center Planning Area C, Subarea C seven, and is located south of Lower Road. As you can see by the aerial, the property is located on the peninsula near the heart of Solomon's Island. Just north of the Yachting Center is Our Lady Star of the Sea and directly across from Back Creek is the main drag of the Solomon's Town Center, the C one sub-sub area right there. Sorry. This slide shows the submitted plot plan for the proposed boat shop and its orientation on the property. The accessory structure is proposed to be located on the northern portion of the property. I believe that the location may require a side setback variance, but that's not something that the Architectural Review Committee is tasked with taking into consideration. The elevations were submitted by the architect. They show all sides of the proposed building. From left to right, you'll see the front elevations, which would be facing Back Creek, and the exterior, rear, and side elevations. Noted on these elevations are a large roll-up door, again, I think for the boats themselves, metal wall panels, and a proposed roof pitch showing two twelve. And these are just samples and snippets taken from the architectural review application and submitted material documents. As described on the application, the proposed building type is a prefabricated metal building with a two twelve roof pitch. The siding is to be metal, the trim to be metal. And they supplied a manufacturer's specification for the metal building, as you can see on the right. The Solomon's Architectural Review Committee reviews applicable external design features within the town center in accordance with the provisions of the Solomon's Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance. They then make recommendations in writing to the Planning Commission. Per the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance, the Planning Commission may delegate its authority to its chairperson or its secretary to approve design features that are both consistent with the master plan and its zoning ordinance and comply with the recommendations of the Architectural Review Committee. The Solomon's Architectural Review Committee reviewed this project at their regular meeting last month, September eleventh, 2023, and the committee recommended approval of the proposed forty by sixty prefabricated metal building. Per normal procedures, the recommendation of approval was then prepared by staff for the Planning Commission Administrator for final review. On September fifteenth, Tamara Blake Wallace, Planning Commissioner, Commission Administrator, excuse me, sent a memorandum informing staff that the recommendation of approval from the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee is not consistent with the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance and she did not have the authority to sign the recommendation of approval. So the memorandum that she sent back to staff cited several several sections from the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance that established applicability for her decision. And then she also went on to reference table six dash three, as you can see on the screen here, architectural design criteria. So shown on this slide, outlined is first, building materials. Metal is not listed as a permissible building material south of Lower Road. A second concern was the roof pitch. The application and elevation show a two twelve roof pitch, but the design criteria requires the main roof pitch to be a minimum of six twelve. Lastly, accessory structures, citing that the Appearance Code criteria applies to this project as a proposed boat shop is greater than two hundred and fifty square feet. The Planning Commission Administrator offered the applicant two options. One, redesign the building to meet the criteria of the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance and design guidelines submitted and resubmit to staff. Or two, proceed to the Planning Commission for consideration of the recommendations submitted by the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee. The applicant obviously requested to proceed to the Planning Commission, which is what we're doing here this evening. So this evening, we're asking the Planning Commission to review and discuss both the recommendations from the Planning Commission Administrator as well as Solomon's Architectural Review Committee for SARC twenty twenty-three, determine if the proposed exterior design features meet the minimum design criteria as referenced in the Solomon's Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance, and to resolve the architectural review application for the exterior design features proposed in SARC twenty twenty-three. Any questions?
Jessica, is the property zone marine commercial?
Yes, I believe so, yes. Yes.
Are the zoning requirements readily available online and for anyone to be able to access to freely?
Yes.
And is... I know you wouldn't be able to answer this, but as an architect, I would imagine that an architect would know what the zoning requirements are in designing a structure for compliance with zoning ordinances, normally. That's a statement, not a question, sorry.
Well, we had multiple conversations with the, one of the applicants several times and I guess the idea was that because of the requirements that this project needed, they felt like they wanted to go through this process and see what type of conversations could be had. I did explain the process and that it would be kind of lengthy and that there was, that nobody really had the authority to approve this. But this was the route that they chose to go. The applicants are here. The architect as well as, I guess, the builder. So that was just the route that they chose to take.
So it's three items, if they were to be able to correct three items, then it would be within zoning requirements?
It's more two items and then the last one was, was that it was applicable because it's over a certain square footage.
Gotcha. So change in the siding and change in the roof pitch, the trusses would bring into compliance?
For the Appearance Code standards, yes.
So it's because it's metal, it's proposed to be metal? Is that the...
That's one of them, yes.
Aren't there, are there other metal buildings that are south of Lower Road?
There may be.
That are metal, correct?
There may be, but it's not something that...
They probably were there prior to the architectural review requirements coming into effect. Anything that was after architectural review has to meet these requirements.
And that's only applicable if it's over two hundred and fifty square feet, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there could be other metal buildings that are down there that are under two hundred and fifty square feet that that wouldn't apply to?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the design folks. What, what would it cost? What would it cost to change the exterior to meet the architectural...
Can you just state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Matt Keen.
Thank you.
The design cost would be considerable. Change it to like a vinyl side or something that way. The other, I'd like to make two corrections is that if you, it doesn't back up to the Catholic Church, it backs up to the Pilate Association is one. The other is if we changed the pitch on the roof, then we're going over the height requirement. So that was the two things that were kind of the red flag of why do it? And as of, is there metal buildings in Solomon's, past Lower Road? There are plenty of them that are down towards the end of the island, which are state-owned. You know, so that's where we're at. I mean, we're not saying that we'll change the design. We're willing to do with the, we want an aesthetically pleasing building, but something that's functional too. You know, it has to be able to get a travel lift in it to work on the boats. It's not like, you know, it's a need there in Solomon's. The last point that I'd like to make is that there's a, it used to be a boat motel and the frame of the boat motel is still standing there to this day. And, you know, the owner was going to take it down when he purchased the place and I said, no, don't take it down because, I mean, we're willing to take it down. We're willing to go back with the boat motel, you know? So I think that the, the building would be a whole lot better suitable for the community, but...
The purpose of this building is to bring large vessels in for maintenance?
Yeah, maintenance on the boats, so there's really, there's one other, I think it's up the road, there's a building that's by the hotel, I think, or the hotel or something, there's one, I can't remember the name of. They actually have a, a building that they can pull the travel lift in.
Matt, could you speak, come closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
No pressure here, so.
It's a lot easier to sit down.
Question. Is there, is there a way or another entity that could approve a variance or, or an exception? Or is that us here?
It's you.
Okay. There's not an appeal process or anything like that?
They can appeal your decision to the Circuit Court.
Circuit Court.
Okay.
Question I have. Solomon's Architecture Review Committee was aware of these regs? Yes, no?
Yes, Jessica did explain those rules and they are very versed on the Solomon's Town Center Ordinance and the guidelines for architectural review.
So what they quoted when they approved it was they went to Article Nine in the Solomon's Town Center Zoning Ordinance, which then sent them to Article Nine in the Calver County Zoning Ordinance, which had no information on marine facilities. And that's when, when Tamara made her determination, the, she did quote the applicability of the Appearance Code despite it being a marine facility.
I just remember that recently there was a building permit that was denied because of appearance in Solomon's. And I'd hate to sit there and disapprove one and approve another. And where that would, number one, what it would look like, and number two, what, what it would open up as far as any possible comebacks by somebody else. Is there a way that the pitch can be changed but still have an open-ended trust to be able to allow the travel lift in and be able to get that in there with staying inside the thirty-five?
So the, the travel lift is thirty something feet tall. But yeah, there is a way to change the pitch on the roof to kind of, I don't think we could get a six twelve out of it. We could adjust it some. I'll be honest with you, I don't know if anybody in this room other than a few people can pick out the difference between six and four. So, you know, and then if you read in some of the planning stuff, it says if it's a two-story building, well, there's nothing in there that defines a two-story building to increase the height. So is, if I put a mezzanine in it with a window and a set of steps, does that consider a two-story building? So we're just asking the Planning Commission. I mean, we're going to work with you guys just to, to make the building fit, but, you know, within reason. I don't think the owner wants to spend a whole lot of, you know, a ton of money on, on like a two-story building that he's not, never going to use. But if it's something on the outside, if you guys want, you know, a bigger overhang or something of that nature that would make it aesthetically, that wouldn't add a whole lot of cost to the building. And I talked to David this morning and, you know, as of the metal siding, I guess, I guess his biggest concern is like a fire. If you have a fire, that, you know, he wants a building that's not going to burn and, you know, but he's, he also wants a building that he can, he can use that's functional, that, you know, for the inside.
In, in the zoning ordinance, is there, if, I'm sorry. Looking the wrong way. In the zoning ordinance, if a building material is material A as in steel, but it clearly appears to be a different material, there's a lot of different fake or faux materials that present a different that presents themselves differently from what they are, would that be allowed or disallowed?
I guess that would have to be a determination made by the zoning, the zoning officer. It does state in the building materials that it could be wood or wood appearance. So I guess that's a, that's a good question.
I'm asking for Ms. Mickle to come up, please. I want her wisdom on this, please.
I'll, I'll put some pictures of the metal building.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you.
You want to look at them?
Bring it, yeah.
Yeah.
We could pass that around.
Yeah, thank you.
Judy Mickle, zoning, Deputy of Zoning. And to be consistent, we have in the past approved, if it appears to be a certain priority, unless it really isn't. So I would think to be consistent, we would allow.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
I'm all for business expanding and, and, you know, providing the services to the public, et cetera, and especially down in Solomon's with the water community that we have down there. I'd really like to see if, if this would be able to be pushed back to resolve the architectural reviews and see if there's a middle ground and, and see if there's a way that you can get to cost-benefit analysis down to the point of being able and see if there's a middle ground and, and see if there's a way that you can get to cost benefit analysis down to the point of being able to not spend a huge amount of money on it, but make it closer than what it is in appearance and design in order to better fit the existing zoning requirements. And I think from the sounds of it, there sounds like there's possibly some leeway there and, and some other ideas in order to do that.
That was offered, yes.
So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we have, that we ask that they resolve the architectural review application for the exterior design features proposed by the S A R C for the forty by sixty metal boat chop located at two five five Alexander, Alexander Lane in Solomon's.
Can you, you'd like to make a motion to what?
To have them resolve the architectural review application for the exterior design feature.
Resolve it how? How do you want us to resolve it?
That's what I.
We're delegating the Planning and Zoning Commission then to them, is that we're giving them the ball?
That, that was my concept, yes.
Right.
So giving.
Given a remanded back to staff for them to resolve.
It's option three of the next steps.
So I guess my question is, can we approve it as what the Solomon's architectural re- review has approved? Can we agree with their recommendations?
You would have to find, make a finding that it's consistent. If you found it's consistent, then it's possible. But you would have to actually make a finding that yes, the plan was consistent with the architectural review criteria.
But the architectural review didn't have the information on the marine status there.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, but it's my understanding that the architectural review committee did not have the full information available to them as far as the zoning requirements.
They have that information, yes, they do.
So a, as far as this board is concerned, where our narrow window when we're looking at this is, and I'll just read it, that we can approve design features that are both consistent with the master plan and its zoning ordinance and comply with the recommendation of the architectural review committee. Well, we have the recommend, we have a positive recommendation of the, the architectural review committee. So in order for us to approve it, and I think this was Jessica's point, is it would have, you would have to have a finding that it's consistent with the master plan and its zoning ordinance, which.
Which we're saying it's not.
Which, you know, I mean, I, I can't tell you how to rule on this, but the, the wiggle room is consistency.
And Solomon's Architecture Review Committee does have a design manual that outlines the same that's in the zoning ordinance.
Can I make one statement?
Yes, sir.
So if you're saying that if we change the roof pitch, if you're saying that we change the pitch, is that helping you guys or does that not? I mean, if you're saying that we have to apply completely with the, all of the zoning ordinance, I don't know what this board is for.
So, so I think the board is for not letting you put giant metal buildings in the middle of the harbor. That's what you're asking to do, sir. Yes, sir. And it is right in the middle of the harbor.
It's behind, it's behind the Yachting Center. It backs up against another massive building that's with the Pollard Association. So it's not like it's going to be sticking out in the sore thumb.
What do we do when the next one comes in and we say, well, you know, hey, we, we, we have an ordinance, but, you know, let, let's think about it and let's let it go.
So how many other marinas are down in the island that have that much?
I have no idea.
If, if I may, if, if you feel that the materials or the pitch or whatever else doesn't work, there's, there's plenty of avenues for you to effectuate a change of those materials. You know, new materials are invented every day, new building styles are invented every day, there, there's, there's a route for that. I don't think anybody in this board is foreclosing all ideas. This board is very open to new ideas, but we.
That's what I'm asking the board, is what would they like to see? If there's, if you're saying I have to go completely with the zoning ordinance, then I don't see how it's going to work, I mean.
Well, what I was asking about earlier, making the suggestion of, we're, we're looking at two different, two items that are inconsistent with zoning ordinances. One is the building material, which we determined that it appears that a steel material that looks like something else, i.e. lumber, would clearly be approved under the zoning ordinance, and then the other thing on the roof pitch.
What's the zoning ordinance that says it can't be metal?
Um, I believe we established that it has to be wood or the appearance of wood.
Appearance of wood.
So there's, I remember there's another local business that won an environmental award a few years ago because they re-clad part of their building and some material that looked like brick but wasn't brick, it was metal. You know, so there's lots of different materials out there and that, that's what my suggestion would be and, and there goes where I made the motion of to try to resolve the architectural disputes or the, the, the two hiccups.
So you're saying change the pitch and change the siding?
Those are the only two things that would be holding it up from a yes as far as I can tell on zoning.
So both to change the pitch or over the height, so I guess you're going to report a view for that?
But there could be something.
There is an avenue of a height variance, I was just getting ready to say.
Somebody said something about a variance or a two-story, if you add a mezzanine, that was your idea. So, I mean, simple tweaks would allow, would allow it to flow through without any, without any major objections and it wouldn't, it wouldn't tie anybody else's hands to, to being able to, if we approve you, then we have to approve that person and then that person and on down the line. That, that, that's my only concern.
I'm with you, so, well, I just want to clarify the metal side, if, if, you know, I mean, the pictures that I showed you, I mean, they, that doesn't look like wood, you mean, but it is a metal side, it's a good-looking building and, you know, it's a regular round four.
Well, wood also, if it appears like T one eleven siding, T one eleven siding is wood. You know, and that, I mean, it's not anything I'd want to wrap my house in, but it still looks like wood, you know. And I, I hope that's what my, that was the intent of my motion was to.
Yes, so we do have a motion on the floor and just to clarify, that is to have the applicant work with staff to resolve the issue, to perhaps include a variance for the pitch and explore some additional ideas for siding?
Correct, or, or a workaround for the pitch.
A workaround.
Or the height level or whatever the case that would make it to where it's compliant with the zoning ordinance. Is that, that was what my impression was and my intent was for the motion as option three in the next steps.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Gadway, seconded by Commissioner Freeland, any further discussion?
I, I.
Yes, sir.
Still a little unsure on the exact motion, Commissioner Gadway, if we can just one more time.
It is my understanding that the, that the motion is to have the architect and the builder work with staff in order to bring the building into compliance with zoning ordinances.
So what we would be doing is declining.
If I could jump in, I, I would interpret this as a tabling to allow a amendment of the application.
Thank you, thank you.
So your motion is to table.
So is there any way that it has to come back to us or they can resolve it on their own and it doesn't come back to us?
If in fact the applicant meets the consistency requirements and the building material and pitch requirements, actually the designee of the planning commission could approve it and would never necessarily have to come back here.
So just so I understand, it's, it's almost like option one that the planning commission administrator had offered, which was not technically a redesign, but to meet the criteria that the Solomon's Town Center, and these, these are just options that, that have been.
That's exactly.
Explored.
That's, that's exactly the, where, where I would like to see it go is for the redesign, like they said, option one that Ms. Blake Wallace gave them the option of.
And resubmit to staff.
And then resubmit it, if everything, it's my understanding from what I just heard, if everything falls in line, then it would never come back here.
That's correct.
Right.
Understood. Great.
Do you understand the motion?
Everybody good?
Do I need to re, reword the motion?
I think we're good.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item ten on the agenda, items for discussion and or action. S D oh two thirty, Oakdale Farm, section two, lots eleven through forty-one, Port Republic, tax map thirty-one, and it's a waiver request for fencing and trail requirements.
I would like to recuse myself due to the appearance of conflict of interest.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Olivia Vedotto, Planner Three with Planning and Zoning in the Development Review Section. This is for Oakdale Farm, S D oh two dash thirty, section two. It is for the fence and trail waiver request. There was quite a bit in the package, so I'm going to try to go over that with you and give you some background on this project. Oakdale Farm is a subdivision on the north side of Brooms Island Road in Port Republic. Sorry, I get trigger happy here with these things, I apologize. So the first ten lots were recorded in nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-eight. Section two was submitted later and that consists of lots eleven through forty-one, which was submitted in two thousand and two and recorded in phases between two thousand and four and two thousand and nine. So this first phase was a parcel and it was recorded, but they reserved a right-of-way in order to connect to the adjacent parcel with the idea that they would come back with future development. So these are the plats for that, you can see where it comes off the cul-de-sac and that reserved future right-of-way became the road into the subdivision. Continues on and then ends in the cul-de-sac at the very end. So part of this preliminary approval required a fence along the boundary with the Harkness property, which consists of seventy-two point nine seven acres, and they were also required to have a trail as part of the amenities. The requirement for the fence was because the Harkness property has an agricultural assessment. That's the forest retention. So included in your package, there was a letter of request from the developer to not have the fencing and the trail and to have those requirements waived. They have spoken with the residents of the subdivision, there were responses included in this letter. I believe that you all have in front of you another email that came in today that they have sent more information out, they've been working with the developer, and the property owners do not want the trail. They feel it is something of a safety concern as it meanders through a lot of the backs of the lots. And the fencing is open-ended, so I will go and show you. This is the property, the Harkness property, which is to the west. You can see where Oakdale Farm is. Good portion of the Harkness property is wooded, which does provide some buffer. It is farmed up front, there's a barn, there are no houses. There's also some woods that still go into the Oakdale Farm property. This also shows you the topography, which the wetlands and steep slopes that runs between the property as well. This is the fence plan. The fencing would actually go all the way down to the southeast corner, so that's not marked properly, but it is still open-ended, so it would stop at that corner and stop up in the northwest corner as well. So any person, animals, whatever, can go from Oakdale Farm over to the Harkness property or from the Harkness property over to Oakdale Farm. This is the trail plan, and as you can see, it does meander through forest retention, the woods, and comes up behind quite a few of the lots. The fencing and the trail are both within open space and there are forest retention areas, there are also some sensitive features. Fencing and trails have been installed in previous subdivisions that had sensitive areas, steep slopes with minimal clearing or grading, so it's not that it can't be done. But again, it's one of those things that has always been raised, you have a fence that doesn't close and most fences are to keep something in or keep something out. So again, they, their concerns were safety and maintenance regarding the fence and also the trails. So staff recommends that you consider the request on the merits as presented and if approved, a replating would be required to be submitted to Planning and Zoning for review and approval and then recordation to revise the notes and requirements. Your next steps would be approval of this request or approval with modifications of these conditions. Deferral of the planning commission requires additional information prior to action or denial of this project, which will require the applicant to make significant changes and then resubmit to Planning and Zoning for consideration by the planning commission. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I believe there are also, I believe the engineer or the developers in the audience as well.
Olivia, do we have input from the Harkness families that still, who owns that property?
They had tried to get a letter from them, they've talked to them and I've, I've talked with a couple of the residents in there that actually go and hunt on the Harkness property with their permission. They just could not get a letter out of them and they haven't spoke to myself or anybody else in staff that I'm aware of.
So they're aware of this and have not protested in any way?
Correct, to my knowledge, yes.
Olivia, was the trail required to meet a recreational component of the subdivision?
So it's part of the overall amenities as far as you might have trail requirements, recreation area. They do have a focal point and part of their open space within the short cul-de-sac that I will not be able to read the name of that from here. So there are some of that amenities were met with that requirement.
None of these trails extend outside of that development and none of the entrances are near. It, it appears from what I can see, none of the entrances to the trails are near an area outside the development.
Correct, it's all internal.
Does anybody recall what the rationale was that they agreed to twenty years ago to agree to build the fence and the trails?
Well, it is part of our requirements with the subdivision. We tried to work with the developer at the time. The requirement for the fencing is for any property that's adjacent, if it's assessed agricultural or if it's within an agricultural preservation district. Now, those requirements have changed some over the years. We try to work with both parties if they're involved and the trail aspect of it is part of the amenities for the subdivision. Specifically back then versus now with our requirements, I think they were a little bit looser on what the requirements for rec area would be within a subdivision. And the rec area requirements changed in nineteen ninety-four. It went from anything fifty or less had to have specific rec requirements and then they added that fee as part of the permits. So our, our requirements changed, so this subdivision is not fifty lots. Therefore, it didn't have to have the recreation area and amenities like you see in some of the larger subdivisions.
So the recommendations for the trail and the fence were made by the planning and zoning department, not the planning commission?
It was made as part of the staff report to the planning commission. Fencing is a requirement in the ordinance. The trails and amenities are a requirement, but they're applied differently now than they were then.
And as far as you know, there are or were no plans to have these trails connect any of the trails?
No plans.
If it were to be submitted today, from what I understand you saying, because it's under fifty, the. under fifty, the trails would not be required, but the fencing would?
The trail would be an option as an amenity for the subdivision. They could have a trail that went along the roadway versus behind people's lots, though. Or they could propose something else within the open space that didn't go near where the lots were.
So if I'm tracking the square footage or the acreage, whatever, of the trail, was included into the approval to account for recreational space or amenity space?
At the time that this was done, it was not a requirement for a specific square footage for a trail. We have hard surface requirements now that most of the developers will do as a trail or a basketball court or things along those lines.
So it sounds like the fence was more of a delineation of the boundary than it was anything else?
Unfortunately, with the fencing requirement, the way it's written, it only goes from point A to point B. It never closes in any of these situations.
It delineates the boundary.
It does delineate the boundary. That is correct.
Good evening, Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director of Planning. I believe the fence, the wording in the provision was that the fence was to be installed to protect the agricultural land from intruders, and it said I E. dogs and I think it was four-wheelers, something to that effect. So it was strictly to be along only that portion that was assessed as agriculture. That's why we don't have a move. There's a closed fence.
And to me, I fully understand, and I can comprehend, the open end as the requirement. That's not an issue to me that, you know, trying to keep people in or out or this or that. It's a barrier, border marking between the agricultural area and not, and the residential area. So the open-ended aspect has, I don't think, had any bearing twenty years ago, and I don't think it has any bearing now personally.
Well, like Carolyn said, keeping something out of the Harkness property or from somebody going from the Harkness property over into Oakdale Farm, you cannot really achieve that when you have an open end on each end of the fence.
You'd actually have to trespass on somebody else's property to do that. That'd be a third party. That's probably why they didn't... Sorry, I wasn't in the mic. You'd have to go onto a third-party property in order to be able to do that. And so a third-party property has not, didn't have anything to do with it at that point.
Well, you're not going to keep anybody from going from one side to the other if they wanted to.
Right.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
A move to approve with modifications, and those modifications are that the fence be eliminated, but the boundary be marked per Maryland Department of Natural Resources protocol.
What about the trail?
Trail can be eliminated.
Can you elaborate on what that is on your first recommendation?
Maryland Department of Natural Resources has established boundary markings of a blue paint stripe along the boundary at so many feet high, and I want to say it's at least four inches wide, paint stripe.
Well, we'll certainly look it up and put it in there. I was just wondering in case anybody here or on the Zoom wanted to know what it was, so thank you for that information.
So no trail, no?
Just a mark.
A little static. Gotcha. I will second that.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Freeland, seconded by Commissioner Tui. Any further discussion?
They wouldn't be required, under that motion, they would not be required to add any alternative amenity or public use space of any kind or use space for the development.
They would not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item B, text amendment case TA twenty-three oh one, creation of a public safety chapter in the county code and proposed text amendments to the Calver County zoning ordinance.
Can we get Commissioner Williams before we begin, please?
Who we have?
Olivia, she's here.
There we go.
Good evening, Commissioner. Stanley Harris, Emergency Communications Chief for Emergency Communications. So it's been a few months since we went through this, so we'll go through it, kind of refresh our memories, and then hopefully address the questions that we had the last time that we were here and address agency comments. So this work session was to discuss draft updates to the Calver County Code, review and discuss the proposed tax amendments for twenty-three dash oh one to the Calver County zoning ordinance, which was needed to facilitate the creation of the new code, and discuss the need for microwave path protection throughout the county. So as we discussed before, in July of two thousand and twenty, the addressing function moved from Calver County Planning and Zoning to the Department of Public Safety, and with that, changes were needed in the zoning code to address the authority, the change of authority. So staff is proposing to remove the grid addressing numbering system and display of address number sections from the zoning ordinance and place it in a new public safety section of the Calver County Code. The proposed changes were to add reference to Chapter Ninety-Five Public Safety of the Calver County Code for Regulations Regarding Non-Interference With Emergency Communications Microwave System to the following zoning ordinance sections. Section three dash three dot oh two, the Wind Energy Systems and Communication Tower and Antenna Regulations and General Requirements. Article five, Residential Development Requirements. Section five dash one dot eleven, Height Regulations for All Districts, as well as Article six, Non-Residential Development Requirements. Section six dash two dot oh two, Height Regulations for Non-Residential Uses. Article ten, Naming and Renaming of Roads and Assignments of Premise Addresses, and to remove Sections ten dot one dot oh two, which was the Grid Address Numbering System, and the ten dot one dot oh three, Display of Premise Address Numbers. So before we move on to microwave, was there any questions for the addressing part? I don't think there was the last time, but are there any new questions?
Everything's staying the same. It's just moving departments.
Correct. Yep. It was grammatical changes to change the planning zone and public safety, and it stayed the same. So the microwave path protection background, so in two thousand and twenty-one, we commissioned our new public safety radio system, which was a fifteen-site towered system. The radio system used microwaves to communicate between the fifteen tower sites and the communications necessary for the radio system to function properly. So that communication path is a direct line of sight, so if anything along those line of sights between the two towers were interrupted, it would interrupt the function of the radio system. And the potential of a new building, a new structure, being built along those microwave paths were our concerns, you know, to protect our investment that we built with the radio system. So to protect that investment made by the county and to ensure reliable communications paths, staff is recommending the creation of the public safety section of the county code that addresses the path protection. The new code would require all, a review of all new construction along a microwave path. Any structures being proposed over eighty feet would require a review by Emergency Communications to determine if it will impact a microwave path. There was question last time about how did we come up with eighty feet? So all of our, the lowest microwave that we have on our towers is between a hundred to a hundred and fifteen feet. And with the grade of where the towers are at and where they talk back, we felt eighty feet would give us enough buffer if there was a structure to review that building to make sure there was no impact to the radio system. There was also a question about the building height, and when we went back, we found out that it was left out of the proposed ordinance, so there was a change to the ordinance that you were proposed or that you were presented with last time, and it defined building height to mean the highest point of a building or structure as measured by the vertical distance from the highest point on the structure to the horizontal projections of lowest existing or pre-development elevation within the footprint of the foundation of each structure. So that definition, if somebody was to artificially build their grade, we'll say forty feet, or we'll say fifty feet, right? If they build it fifty feet above natural grade and then a thirty-foot building, that would require a review because that is now eighty feet above the natural grade of where that structure was at or where, what the natural grade was where that building had been built. And then if any, if the new construction is determined to have no impact, staff would issue a notice to proceed to the builder, or if the findings determine that new construction had a potential to have a detrimental impact, the builder will be required to provide an engineering study to confirm whether the structure will have a detrimental impact upon the system's microwave path or paths, and if so, the extent of the impact. If confirmed to have an impact, the Planning and Zoning, Department of Planning and Zoning as well as Public Safety, we would work with the builder to mitigate the impact at their cost. So possible mitigation strategies could include redesigning or relocating their building or their structure to eliminate the impact, or negotiating with the county to design, engineer, and install any additional equipment or modifications necessary to eliminate that impact. So that could be if they were going to build a, we'll say, a water tower along a microwave path, they may be required to put a repeater on top of that microwave path to talk to our two towers. That could be a mitigation strategy. So are there any questions there before we move on to agency comments? So we only received one agency comment, and that was from Calver County Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation, which was to indicate the Emergency Communications Chief or designated in case an covenant is out for an extended period and may not meet the ten-day period, and to change the official title for that position to Communications Chief, which is the, it was listed as Emergency Communications Chief. So those changes were actually made throughout the ordinance or the proposed ordinance. So next steps and recommendations would be for you, for the commission to plant, to review and discuss the agency comments received and direct staff to schedule a joint public hearing with the county commissioners.
I'd like to commend you guys for doing a phenomenal job answering all the questions that we presented.
Very well.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. That we direct staff to schedule a joint public hearing with board county commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gadway, seconded by Commissioner Kernan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item C, text amendment cases TA twenty-three oh five and TA twenty-three oh six, amendments to the Calver County zoning ordinance and Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Again, Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner with Department of Planning and Zoning. This evening, I've got two text amendments to review with you. You saw these both at your August meeting and returning tonight to review agency comments. The purpose of this evening's work session is to review and discuss the proposed text amendment twenty-three oh five to allow multifamily dwellings within the D one sub-district of the Solomon's Town Center, and twenty-three dash oh six to increase the allowable density from seven to fourteen units per acre with the use of transferable development rights or TDRs. To review and to discuss agency comments received and to request direction to schedule a joint public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. Background. Staff received a request from the Solomon's Island S H one LLC on behalf of Solomon's Joint Venture LLC for two text amendments. One, to conditionally permit multifamily residential units within the D one sub-districts of the Solomon's Town Center, and two, to increase the base density from seven units per acre to fourteen units per acre with use of TDRs. Information provided by the applicant on the text amendment application. Circumstances to justify their proposal include redevelopment of the aged and outdated asset to create jobs to aid in economic development, and a need in the Solomon's community for assisted living and memory care facilities. Community benefits include expanding allowable uses within the town center, maintains a need for conference space within the county, and will provide additional tax revenue. This is the map of the Solomon's Town Center with the different sub-districts outlined for your reference, and this is just a map to give everybody a location of the different D sub-districts with special attention to D one, north of Lor Road, and you have Boomerings, and then just to the north of that is D two, which is Solomon's Landing. The Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance gives the purpose and description for the planning areas and the zoning sub-areas of the Solomon's Town Center. The Solomon's Town Center is divided into six planning areas, each of which is further divided into zoning sub-areas. These sub-areas are established to regulate appropriate locations for different types of lane uses within the town center. The appropriate location for a particular lane use is determined by the stated objectives of the Solomon's master plan as well as environmental suitability, the location of public facilities and services, and existing lane uses in the vicinity. The planning area D is Lor Road to the northern town center boundary, east side of two-four as we saw in the map. The sub-area zoning policies for the planning area D. Planning area D is further divided into sub-areas one through five. The following policies relating to the zoning of the sub-area are included in the Solomon's master plan are intended to be implemented and enforced through the Solomon's Town Center ordinance. Sub-areas one and D four, this sub-area is designated for commercial use because of its convenient transportation access and because it is relatively isolated from residential uses and waterfront uses. Sub-areas D two and D three, these areas are designated for primary residential use with small-scale commercial and wet boat storage use. And sub-area D five, this area is designated for residential, commercial, and marine-related industrial use. Master plans for large, underdeveloped land holdings are encouraged. Okay, so now we'll get into the actual text amendment. This is the existing Solomon's table of land uses for residential uses, and then this is the proposed text amendment. So you'll see the red Cs in the middle of the chart under D one for multifamily and attached residential uses. This next slide is the conditions chart, which, this is just for your reference, the conditions aren't proposed to change for the Solomon's residential uses. And then this is the next text amendment for the density change for D one, D two, and D three, going from seven units per acre to fourteen units per acre with, for that middle column with TDRs. This is the change for the Calver County zoning ordinance, and then this... The EDC does emphasize a concern regarding the property in question sitting idle and underutilized, but the text amendments could be, could negatively impact the growth of the surrounding areas. And the EDC would like to see the amendments to include more comprehensive planning and development provisions that align with the county's long-term vision and best interest. So the next steps for the Plan and Commission. Staff recommends that the Plan and Commission review and discuss the agency comments received and direct staff to schedule a joint public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners.
Rachel, in regard to the agency comment, the Department of Economic Development's comment specifically says that they support potential redevelopment of the former Holiday Inn property in the heart of Solomon's. It doesn't mention that they support the expansion of the D one, D two, and D three area. Was there a reason for that? You meant, you said that they were in support, but this looks like they're only in support of the Holiday Inn project.
That was the language that they chose to put in their letter. I'm not going to try to extrapolate more than that.
Ms. Oberg is here tonight.
Would, would the director like, like to speak?
Hi, Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. We clearly support the redevelopment of that site, and we see the value of the project itself, and so we focused on what benefits the project would be as far as economic development and revitalization of that property. And again, we support the redevelopment of the site itself.
So are you, so are you or are you not saying that you support the doubling of the residential density in D one?
We're supporting the redevelopment of the site, and we support the project itself.
So you're being very specific then.
Right. And I don't know for either one. For those who may not know, who is the Calver County Economic Development Authority?
It's an advisory body to the Department of Economic Development.
A citizen committee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, do we have any other questions or comments? And this is specifically to schedule a joint public hearing. This is not an approval or denial.
Correct.
It's just, all you're asking for is a direction.
To move to the next step, to schedule a joint public hearing.
You also have the option, though, to request further information before you do that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we direct staff to schedule a joint public hearing to further discuss this matter.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tuohy, seconded by Commissioner Kernan. Do we have any further discussion?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
If this motion were to fail and it were not to be recommended to move forward, then that project or those text amendments would die, correct?
Yes, it would, the, the text amendment would go back for further direction from the Board of County Commissioners after it, that was received tonight. But yes, the project would not be able to go forward.
Or the text amendments specifically, we're not talking the project, we're talking the text amendments. So just wanted to clarify that. So the text amendments would get kicked back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, if it does, there is one other, there's been a, I hate to use the term moratorium, but there's also been a moratorium on further text amendments. So should this fail, we're looking. Did we have more opportunities? Did we have more opportunities after the news and the organs? Correct.
Rachel, has staff looked at other ways to make the old Holiday Inn project move forward without the need for text amendment?
No, we haven't. We've looked at ways of, of reducing the, what this text amendment covers and putting conditions on it. That hasn't moved forward, or have, we haven't gotten that direction to add any conditions to the text amendment so that it doesn't, isn't as far-reaching as it currently is, but that is certainly an option. The text amendment can be amended so that it's more limited in scope.
So I believe at the last meeting, we talked about a lot of conditions and but there's been no further discussion to add those in at this point?
No.
Yep, I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Kernan?
Aye.
Commissioner Gadway?
No.
Commissioner Freeland?
No.
Commissioner Tuohy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Haller?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Two, three, that's four. It passes.
Thank you.
No, wait, yeah. One, two, one, two, three, and four. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Moving on to Item D, Plan and Commission proposed two thousand and twenty-four annual regular meeting schedule. You have a, before you, you have a memo from Becky Parkinson, the Plan and Commission clerk. It outlines the two thousand and twenty-four meeting schedule. Staff is requesting that the June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting be rescheduled to Wednesday, June twenty-sixth due to the county's observance of Juneteenth. Special meetings, of course, are scheduled as needed, so they are not appearing on this sheet, so they will be added as needed, such as work sessions, joint public hearings, and Plan and Commission hearings. So we are asking that the Plan and Commission approve or amend the attached schedule.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gadway, seconded by Commissioner Kernan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next we'll move on to Item eleven, Items of Interest. We have the Dunkirk Town Center master plan update. That memo before you is from Tay Harris, our long-range planner, to give you information on the community meeting that's taking place on Thursday, November second, at six P.M. at the Dunkirk Volunteer Firehouse located on Ward Road in Dunkirk. If you have any other questions in reference to this meeting, Tay is here. Any questions? Okay, that brings us to Item B, under Items of Interest. The Maryland Planning Commission Association Annual Conference is next week, Tuesday through Thursday, and the preliminary schedule is attached. And that brings us to Item C, Site Plan and Subdivision Application List. These are for informational purposes only. Does the board have any questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Item twelve, Public Comment, and I will pass it over to our moderator.
Okay, does anyone online have a need to speak, ask a question? I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. Thank you. We do have the audience here present, and we do have one speaker.
I'm Leonard Zusa, and I'm speaking on behalf of the concerned residents of Solomon's. Thank you for this opportunity to address the requested rezoning of subjects or D one of the Solomon's Town Center. I see three sets of problems with the proposed rezoning. The first set of problems relate to the content of the official documents that contain the requested text amendments that would, number one, change the zoning from commercial to residential and increase the density from seven to fourteen units per acre. These amendments would allow as many as one hundred and forty multifamily units on this ten-acre platte and potentially create an unprecedentedly high-density development that would irreversibly change the character of Solomon's. Number two, those requesting this change have provided a plan that shows luxury rental units for individuals fifty-five years and older, a luxury hotel, and a memory care nursing unit. However, should you approve these rezonings, there would be nothing to prevent these individuals from changing their minds and requesting to build the high-density multifamily unit development that the rezoning would allow. The county would face serious legal problems if it tried to prevent any development that was consistent with the new zoning. The second set of problems that I see relate to ambiguity and the lack of details in the official documents. The one that causes me the most problem, and the first one, is the, these purport, county documents purport to provide agency comments. Since when did the Calver County Chamber of Commerce become a Calver County agency? That is listed as a county agency. I'm not aware of any such legal standing. Why is it that its comments are given more significant official weight than those of residents? B, where is the analysis by Calver departments that could assess the impact of such a high-density development on county roads, water, sewer, and school from the requested rezoning? The construction of one hundred and forty units at this location would add nearly three hundred vehicles right next to the choke point of the access ramp to the Thomas Johnson Bridge. I'm not hearing any discussion about that particular implication of the requested rezoning. The final problem that I have is that I've heard no one address the precedent that approving this request would have for rezoning other parts of the Solomon's Town Center to similar high-density capacities. Calver County has many smart farmers who would not buy a pig and a poke. They, they demand to see what they are getting before they buy it. You were being asked to buy this rezoning despite the fact that you don't know what kind of development you're going to get if you approve these amendments. I've heard the proposed, the, those who are proposing this particular change mentioned several times that they are on the verge of having their property liquidated, losing it through foreclosure. Should that happen, their plans to have the luxury residential units, the luxury hotel, the memory facility, we could be thrown out, and somebody else could come in and build those one hundred and forty units right next to our property where I live in Solomon's Landing. At a minimum, you should require county staff to assess the impact of the potential high-density project on critical public facilities and on the character of Solomon's before you approve the requested rezonings. We are just asking you to be as smart as a Calver County farmer. Thank you for this opportunity to address you on the Solomon's rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Chris, are there any virtual?
No, no hand scene.
Okay, we'll move on to Item thirteen, Adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tuohy, seconded by Commissioner Kernan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for attending the meeting tonight.